All right, at this time we have our roll call.
Commissioner Vestabil Shepherd.
Present.
Commissioner Isaac Owens.
Present.
Commissioner Jay Wesley Rainey.
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Boris Reeves Senior.
Here.
Chairman Joshua Daras.
Aloud and present, thank you so much. All right. Do we have a motion to approve that today's agenda, May seventh, two thousand twenty-fourth agenda?
So moved second.
It's been properly moved in second and will approve agenda for today, all right? All in favor, let it be known by voice or aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, agenda approved. Do we have a motion to approve a regular meeting meetings for April sixteen, twenty twenty-four meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that will approve the regular meeting meetings for April sixteen, twenty twenty-four. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, all right, we have a presentation by Mr. Eric Groom, Jr., Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia. How you doing, sir?
Good, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning Chairman, good morning Commissioners. I have one hand out if you, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I tried to keep it um on one page, so I used the back as well, so. Cheating a little bit, but I will.
I can pass them down.
Sure, sure. You. Think I got enough, I hope I got enough, um. If you recall, the last time I was here, we were talking about uh joining the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia, or Gas Authority for your natural gas system, and we just wanted to continue the momentum today. Thought it'd be good time to um discuss, we had a few changes on our board. As you know, we're governed by a nine-city board in Georgia, and um I'll kind of jump to the second page, if you will, on the backside. I highlighted our three new board members. John Herschel, who's City Manager of City of Hartwell, Matthew Bradshaw, who's the Planning Director um at the City of Dublin, and Chris White, who's the City Manager of Thomasville. So those, those are our board members governed by a nine-member seat that rotates every three years. Every city has a right to run for our board. They are really our, our beacon, our, our driver, if you will, for our president and staff. Um, if I may, you can see our members above, I wanted to kind of share with you that. We did add Cartersville here recently since the last time I spoke. Um, so we have eighty-two members now, so we've jumped up from eighty-one members to eighty-two members. Uh, again, we're the largest nonprofit uh joint action agency for natural gas. We were created by the General Assembly in nineteen eighty-seven when natural gas was deregulated. Um, and if I may, you called us at a great time, last week we dispersed our returns to our members, and that's on the front page. I thought this would be um enlightening for Cordial to kind of look. We had a record year last year, it's, it's um, things just really worked out in the natural gas system on capacity release, capacity, your capacity, the city's capacity, and all our city's capacity was worth a lot due to obvious reasons, power, um, capacity's not being built anymore in this, in, in Georgia, it's, we're very constrained in Georgia. We, we definitely want to pursue opportunities to bring more capacity for more industrials, more customers of natural gas, but you can just see um the return we gave to the, to the eighty-two members this year was a record twenty-one million. Um, last year it was about seventeen million, so you can see how much it was up, and it has a lot to do with the capacity release. The, we manage the capacity for the members, and when it's of higher value, we obviously sell it on your behalf, so. Great year, we, we looking forward to Cordial joining. Um, it's funny, in the gas business, um, it's a monthly service, really. Uh, so uh typically, everything changes on the first of the month for, in the gas business. It's not a daily or a yearly, it's, it's a monthly industry, so we're, we're really excited about Cordial potentially joining. Um, we think summer is a great opportunity to uh, to, to join the membership, to kind of switch your s- uh current supplier. Um, and so be happy to answer any questions, I think I'll come before you again with um, uh, the footprint to, to, to join membership, basically it's our contracts, and obviously you want to provide notice to your current supplier. Uh, you at least want to give them thirty, sixty-day notice to your current supplier, so just here really, um, glad to have the opportunity to come and, and speak for ten minutes, but just to let you know the momentum is pushing, and so we want to definitely keep that momentum in the right direction, and we, we are, our members and our board are looking forward to see if Cordial joining.
Thank you, Mr. Groom.
Sure.
Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
In comparison to the seventeen, seventeen that you talked about.
Correct.
Last year to the twenty-one, what, what's, what will be a, this being a banner year, what would be the average, what, how, what would we fall?
Yeah, I think for the last, um, great question, for the last couple of years, it's been seventeen, prior to that it was fifteen million. But that's been the baseline, fifteen million has been the baseline for us to disperse back to the membership, so um, uh, you know, nobody knows the future, what, 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 what holds in the future for the gas industry, but I think capacity's still going to be valuable this year, next year. Um, I don't see that going away until you see major pipeline projects in Georgia, and of course, that's um, you know, that's caught, that's, that's been debated, contested uh quite a bit, new pipelines in the ground, so um, you know, I, I just think capacity's going to be worth even more in the future until, until we can get some more infrastructure in the ga- ground for, for our cities and for our industrial customers, for Georgia. You know, we want to be number one in industry in the country, for sure, we want to bring as many jobs as we can to our communities, so we're all for that, um, and a lot of plants need natural gas today, but um, you know, I, I would think, uh, you know, just to be honest, I, twenty-one million was a record, you know, I would think that next year for twenty twenty-four, for pay out, payment out in twenty twenty-five would be in that seventeen to eight million dollar range again, which is great, great returns for the members, for those eighty cities, eighty-one cities.
Thank you for that, any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming to see us. All right, I don't believe we have any speakers. Uh, okay, thank you, so we'll move right into our department head reports, first our Community Advancement Manager, Mr. Hill. Good morning, Mr. Hill.
Good morning.
Good, how are you?
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Commissioner, thank you for allowing me to present to you today. Um, I wasn't here for the last meeting, I was attending the GIC conference, um, it was fantastic. Um, going to be sharing some uh information with uh Ms. Redding, and hopefully we'll have some projects underway sometime soon. Um, the first thing I did uh on the way to Tifton was I met with USDA, because they had quite a bit of information for various programs that we could distribute at our summit on the twentieth, the Housing Summit on the twentieth, so I had a chance to meet with them. Uh, I attended the GIC conference, um, and it was great because I had a chance to meet quite a few other cities. They also gave us the opportunity to collaborate with them on projects or get guidance on projects that they have already done that we may be looking into. So the relationships are um just going to be invaluable for us. Uh, on the way from the conference, I stopped to meet with the Modular Home Company, um, because the manufactured homes aren't necessarily allowed in the city any longer, but the modular homes are, so I ma- made sure that I took the opportunity to meet with a company that could provide us with the housing stock that we need, get uh square foot pricing so that we're, we're, where we're going with it, and uh hopefully we'll have a uh great relationship with them. Um, we had the Housing Summit on April the twentieth, um, I think uh it was uh met with great fanfare, we had about sixty in attendance, and uh I believe Ms. Redding was pleased with how everything turned out, so if she was pleased, I was pleased. Um, we, I attended the Propel meeting, and uh I'm working with the uh Workforce Housing Committee, and uh had an opportunity to meet with a family, I got a phone call. The gentleman um has just become a double amputee. Uh, in, as your Community Advancement Manager, what I did was reach out, and I found out that one of the churches builds ramps. So they are looking to build a ramp for that family this year at no cost to that family. So those are the kinds of things that this position as Community Advancement Manager affords me the opportunity to meet with people in the community and try to feel some needs that sometimes, you know, come unexpected. Uh, and the last thing is I have been reviewing that USDA uh set D funding, and hopefully there'll be some uh resources available for some of the projects that we're talking about. Uh, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hill? Thank you for all you're doing, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Next is Finance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have started receiving the two thousand twenty-four splash funds. The first check was for ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-two cents. Our total tax collection was three hundred and sixty-one dollars, six hundred and eighty, um, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-three cents, that was our total collection. Okay, that's all I have, any questions?
Any questions for Finance? Thank you so much. And that's Fire.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is for reporting period March twenty-fifth through April twenty-ninth. We had fifty total calls for service, three structure fires, we had five grass fires, nineteen medical calls, four motor ve- vehicle accidents, and two gas leaks. As far as department news goes, Fire Line was in town last week, they did all of our annual pump testing, all of the trucks passed except for ladder three, and we've got some mechanical issues with it, we're going to need to deal with. And then injure two is still in the repair shop from the accident on the interstate at the end of last year, we should get it back soon. Fire Line will also be in town this week to do testing on our SCBA's. Um, we did enjoy both Employee Service Awards Lunch and Employee Appreciation Lunch, the food was great at both, thank you very much for that. And then John Watson, who is our newest recruit, will be graduating Friday from the Fire Academy with his firefighter one and hazmat certifications. He is the valedictorian of his class, so we're proud of that, and will be attending that. Yes. And then also want to announce that the Fire Department was awarded one of the fireworks tax grants through Georgia Fire Standards and Training, that's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Um, we are required to match it ten percent, and we're going to use it to replace some of our older M-seven Firehawk SCBA's with the new G-one models, so that's what that'll be used for. On our Hoz Alert um update, this is for March, April was not available when the report was sent in, so April will have that next month. Um, in March, we had seventy-eight total calls, eight hundred and ninety-five drivers were alerted that we were either on scene in front of them or approaching, and the average response time was two point eight minutes. That's all I have.
Any questions for Fire? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Housing Urban, uh, thank you, ma'am. Good morning, Mr. Contral, how are you?
Good morning Chairman, good morning Commissioners. In my report this morning, the Cordial Planning and Zoning Commission held a s- has scheduled a public hearing and meeting on Thursday, May twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, at ten a.m. for the request to amend the zoning for the following described track, tracks of land located at one-ten West Twenty-first Avenue, Cordial, Georgia. From R seven-five median density district to G C, general commercial district. The property is owned by G S S Rental LLC, Cal Hooks, parcel C thirteen seventeen four, pot C, general commercial, also known as Loz, one-ten West Twenty-first Avenue. The request was approved by the Planning Commission. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four to review and consider a public hearing request from the property owner, Kevish Patel, to install one double-faced freestanding sign to look to total of a hundred and ninety square feet. The condition to use permit to be located at twenty-one oh nine East Sixteenth Avenue, Cordial, Georgia. The property is zone eight C Highway Commercial, the request was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And, and uh Cordial Historic Preservation Commission met on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth to review and consider an application re- received from Mister Mister Demetrius Walker for repairs to a house located within the Gillespie Southern Historic District at three oh eight South Tenth Street. Also a structure located at seven sixteen West Fifteenth Avenue within the Gillespie Southern Historic District owned by Daniels and Daniels Properties were to be placed on the agenda, however, the property owner was unable to attend the public hearing. In our CHIP twenty eighteen grant program, the Southwest Georgia Regional Commission Grant Administrator is continuing to keep in contact with Department of Community Affairs Atlanta Office regarding the status of the twenty twenty-four CHIP Housing and Rehabilitation Grant Application Program. And next, our Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, we still have the same five Hobo Cafe first loan, Hobe- Hobo Cafe second loan, Ray Ray's Restaurant, the Grant Building, and R and D Lawn Care. And we will give you a report on the balances soon. And that's all, and our CDBG twenty 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 Sewer Re Improvement Project, River Valley Regional Commission is in the process of preparing the final closeout public hearing for the McLeod subdivision sewer line improvement project. That's all I have, thank you. Unless you have some questions?
I have one, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, should the grant on the Housing Law one, what was the last communication with the grant administrator?
The grant administrator?
We said we'll hear somebody fifteen of April, uh, do you anything?
No, ma'am, not from DCA yet, but uh, we just, we are at that beck and call, go ahead, miss.
I just want to add that I spoke with Miss Wade probably about a week ago, and she said they were still waiting for DCA to make that note.
That's it.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a correction on the first item, the Planning and Zoning Commission has not approved that item yet because the meeting is made twenty-third.
Okay, any further questions for Housing Urban Development? Seeing none, all right, thank you, Mr. Contral. All right, next is HR. Morning, David.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Do you have my report in your packet? Um, vast majority of the items on here are just daily operational items, so I'm not going to go over everything, however, the three that I did want to highlight, first uh noted on here is March twenty-seventh date, this is revolving, I'm sorry, involving Emory University and the uh Georgia Go, Go Sun Smart Georgia Program. You have uh signed the service agreement, that information's been submitted to Emory. Matter of fact, I was on the, I was exchanging emails this morning with April Hermstead with that program, and uh we're in the works of having it up and running. The other item um is our, our liability insurance that has a July nineteenth renewal date. It's fairly involved process because it does involve um gas fleet, inland marine, general liability, cyber uh property, and I'm sure there's something else, else out there I've forgotten, but we're in the process of gathering that information uh for submitter for renewal. And then lastly, this is one I'm kind of excited about, um, it's a program called Worksource Georgia, that's uh administered by the Technical Co- the Technical College System of Georgia, and this allows us to post vacancies, and it's, it goes throughout all of the technical schools in the state of Georgia, so those students are able to uh view our, our vacancies and have opportunity to apply with us. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for HR? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Municipal Court?
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
Um, the report for the Municipal Court for um May is, we had a total of two hundred and fifty-six cases, two twenty-seven were traffic, twenty-nine were criminal, ten bench warrants were issued, and twenty-six license suspensions. We had a total of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars collected for the month from cash bonds, fines, um, probation, um, fees, and pre-trial sin- sentences. We had a fourteen ninety-two refund issued. We had zero defendants incarcerated and um zero jail days.
Any questions from Municipal Court?
Um, someone paid the ticket before um the, before the court date, which they can, but then when they get to court and um it's dismissed, or changed to something else, like from a DUI to a reckless driving, um, they get that difference back. So that was two.
The uh, the five hundred dollar fee for the bench warrant.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that called around the state?
Yes. It is what our judge, isn't it, it's been that way. It used to be fifty dollars, but um.
I, I checked into some other cities and I ran across some, ran across some cities that's a hundred bucks. Uh, thank the most I, people I talked to, most of them went up to like one fifty.
It's basically at the judge's discretion.
Okay. If a hundred dollar cost is just too, too much for, that's my opinion, but.
Well, I guess that's what you pay for going to jail, I mean, it's, it's not free, I, I don't know.
I have one question.
[laughing]
Just, when you, when we, I'm going back to the refund.
Okay.
When.
[laughing] Don't start.
I want to get that money. Um, if we, so they pay, you say if they pay their ticket before they come to court?
Mm-hmm. Like a lot of people, if they get arrested on Friday night, DUI is twelve forty-six.
So they'll pay it then?
They don't have to, they can use a bondsman and bond out, or, and some of them don't go to jail, it just depends on, you know, the situation. Um, and if they want to pay it and um then come to court, ninety percent of the time, we do keep the whole bond, but um for some reason, if the public defender um changes his mind and want to drop it to something else, or negotiate to something else, like um reckless driving, which is five hundred dollars, then they get that um seven forty-six back. Because the bond is only, the bond is twelve forty-six, if you reduce it to five hundred dollars, then they get the seven forty-six back.
Yes, ma'am.
There have been some cases, though, where the entire amount has been refunded with DUI.
Yes.
And what is that based on, though?
Um, when the, um, usually the public defender is the one that's um doing the refunds, and he feels that it's not a good case, regardless of whether he'll just um dismiss the case, and then they get the full refund back.
And I understand that you can't speak on behalf of, see, that's, but, I mean, a charge of, and then to, that's a question that we probably need to ask.
Ask him, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
But I guess now you added something else to it, when you say the whole thing is refund.
Yeah, the, the whole, um, and it's, we've had like, I think last month or maybe month before, there was two cases that they got the whole refund back, the whole amount back, because the case was dismissed.
Any further questions?
Please, God.
Uh, I have a question based on the information I just heard. Um, so it seems like the public defender is doing a really good job as far as advocating for defense of the people who come in. However, from hearing from you, it seems like he is driving where he was in court. So my question is, where does it come to the judge's discretion and decision whether or not what would be actually charged for that person?
Since the judge can't actually dismiss a case, he takes the recommendations from the public defender and the solicitor.
But he doesn't have to.
He does not have to, no.
Right, so again, it comes at the judge's discretion, and I've worked in court for over ten years now, on another level, on another side, but I learned a lot, so even though we're printed on the public defender, that's still some action in which the judge, because it's the judge's court. And so I don't know the circumstance, I'm just curious. I don't know the circumstances of those cases, and they can be highly circumstantial.
Mm-hmm.
So, but if you all have concern, first I would like to let them people get their money back. Yeah. But uh, if you all have some concerns, I think the public defender does not run the court, uh, the judge does, and so, and we have some way jurisdiction over, you know, how we want to lead as far as that other, if it don't, you know, interfere with state or federal law, if you all want to provide more direction on that for the judge. Because it seems like you all have concerns both with bonds and with refunds. Yeah. So I think we need to take a look at that, uh, and see what direction we may want to go in, but, yeah. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Any further questions?
I do just have one thing, I know that there's a bunch of traffic violations that's going to be coming to our court where the stop signs that were added at the railroad tracks are now, they were yield signs for twenty years, and then they went to stop signs, and now they're back to yield signs.
The ones over, um, six inches, right?
Yep.
They're going to be changed to warnings.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions from Municipal Court? Thank you, Jack.
Okay.
I think that's as long as you've ever been up here. It works like that some days. Right.
You did great.
All right, police in codes, how you doing, chief?
Great, how are you?
Good, sir.
Good, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, this is a reporting period from March twenty-fifth through April twenty-ninth. Uh, part one crimes, we had a total, this, I'll start with the Police Department. We had a total of fifty-one uh part one crimes. Uh, robberies, we had a total of two, motor vehicles, there were five, uh, excuse me, motor vehicle thefts, there were a total of five. Three of those were recovered, uh, just highlighting some other things, some thefts, we had a total of thirty-eight. Seven of those were entering autos, nine were shoplifting. We made seven arrests uh of adults and one juvenile in those cases, and then there were twenty-two other thefts. Uh, three burglaries, all three of those were residential. Our part two crimes were sixty-five, incidents reported a hundred and forty-seven, community contacts a total of eighteen. We had a hundred and five citations, ninety-four warnings, and one thousand four hundred and eighty-one total calls for service. As far as departmental news, uh, I have some great news, we just hired a corporal who has fourteen years of experience, so we're definitely, he started Monday, definitely happy to have him on board. We have a total of five people, uh, cadets or applicants in our hiring process. We are hoping to offer two formal uh job offers today, uh, later on today, uh, they're at the end of the uh hiring process. Our event committee is also raffling off um a hundred dollar Circle K gift card for gas. Uh, contact the Police Department if you'd like to purchase any tickets, uh, the drawing will be held on May twentieth. I'd also like to publicly thank Ricky Smar and Grace Baptist Church for inviting me uh to speak in fellowship with them, uh, it was great food, they allowed me to talk on church safety and how they can improve their church safety, so again, thank you for that, I, I really enjoyed myself. Uh, we also were going to have members of the Police Department making the trip to Washington, DC uh from May twelfth through the fifteenth to support the Chris County Sheriff's Department. Um, Deputy Ty Brown is going to be honored uh at the Law Enforcement Memorial, so we want to show our support for that, and uh so a few of us will be making the trip to uh show support, and that's all I have for the Police Department.
Any questions for Police Department?
Uh, just one statement, uh, but I, to hear what you did with Grace as far as uh security and safety for the churches, especially when we hear now the national news of an incident took place just this weekend at a church there, where um I think that's something that all of our churches, I know one in particular, that definitely wants to make sure that um safety is in place, because we, we never know who's in the congregation, so I think that um a lot of our area churches need to take a page from Grace and invite you to come so we can have that conversation uh with our con- congregations as well, because uh while we think it never could happen this greatly, that the gun jammed as a man was shooting at the pastor.
Right, I mean, there, there's a lot more involved with church safety. Right. I mean, there's a lot more involved with church safety, um, but yeah, I'd be honored to speak to any church or any organization.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I also want to, um, add that Chief Hurd, along with officials from South Georgia Banking Company, presented to the, I call it faith-based organization meeting or the ministers group on April twelfth, and the topic was safety in the church, and he made the offer at that time for any church willing, you know, wanting him to come and present to, to their congregation that he would be open to doing.
Definitely. Um, you know, now more so than ever, it seems like that's, that's important. But again, church safety is more than just shootings or things like that. It's also security as well as just being ready for emergencies, you know, to respond to it. So, again, thank you. If there's no more questions with the police department, I'll move on to animal control. Again, I wanted to highlight their efforts as well, so I've included, uh, some of their stats as, uh, in my report. Uh, dog and cat intake total, they had a hundred and nine this month. Uh, breaking it down, city intake were sixty-eight, there were thirty-nine from Chris County and, uh, two others. The number of calls received, they had a total of sixty-eight. Twenty-six were, uh, they were following up on our officers responding to some type of, uh, animal complaint. Number of adoptions and rescues, they had a total of eighty-seven, which is really good. Uh, cruelty, uh, cases, they had a total of nine dogs and seven cat cases. And, um, there's openings at the shelters for dogs as well as cats right now. Some of the news is we have volunteers that will be starting soon, and there were a few, um, cats that were missing that were reunited with their owners. So I just wanna again, highlight their, their hard work and, uh, kind of include that in my, um, presentation. Do you have any questions with animal control? All right, moving on to codes. Um, abandoned vehicles, they had a total of five, uh, incidents. Just moving on and highlighting some, we're still having problem with weeds, junk, junk and prohibited items as well as dumping. They had a total of thirty-two incidents. Um, we have seen an improvement, but it's an ongoing thing. Uh, I believe they have issued some citations, uh, we have also given warnings and have tried to work with people, uh, when it comes to these type of incidents. Um, some of the department news as far as codes, the compliance division, um, assisted various property owners as well as private owners of vehicles. When a, um, a business was shut down, there was eleven junk vehicles and those vehicles were, were disposed of and taken care of. And they have also been in talks with, uh, Primetime Trucking, who is interested in bringing a new business, uh, to the city. It's basically semi-trailer, uh, parking for a daily, weekly or monthly period. Wanna highlight some of the ongoing projects. Uh, if you haven't noticed, the Speedway Truck Stop Project is well underway, uh, out there, um, by loves. Another thing is the TA Truck Stop, uh, has been taken off the permitted commercial construction projects. Uh, they decided to not move forward due to construction expenses. Um, so that is no longer on the books there. As far as completed, uh, the Quick Trip Truck Stop, Griffin Trucks Shop, and the Burger King Expansion have all been completed, and that's all I have for codes.
All right, any questions for animals or codes?
Yes, Charlie, just one question. Just noticing the intake, uh, from the county. Do we receive any, uh, money from the county to help sustain the shelter?
Yes, we do.
We do.
E- every intake, actually, there's a cost associated with that.
Okay.
Any further questions for codes or animal control? Thank you, chief. I appreciate you being inclusive of animal control. Thank you. It's good enough. All right. All right, Steve, how you doing this morning?
Good morning, sir.
Good, good. All right.
I just got three things I wanted to point out. Um, one is, uh, the contractor didn't install the new stop signs. They're in the process of adjusting them back to the correct height, so hopefully we'll get that done pretty soon. But they are working on it. And, um, we've also got the no dumping in the alley signs. And I was talking with Jesse this morning, I think he said they had about twenty-four left out of six hundred to put up, so. They should be through that today. And, um, also, we're meeting with the engineers Thursday on the, on the opera grant, the sewer rehab grant. So we'll be coming, we'll be coming to you for, uh, putting some stuff out for bids in relation to that person too. So finally got, uh, okay to move forward on that. And that's all I have. Any questions?
All right, any questions for public works? And, uh, thanks for the update on the stop signs.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, social media marketing manager, Mrs. Smart.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, members of the City Commission, Ms. Redding, good morning. Uh, my report, you have that in your packet, uh, you'll see our activity, uh, for the month up to date. The only change I have is under the heading of the CGI Video Project Update. We had a ti- a, uh, call scheduled for May the eighth, we've rescheduled that for May fifteenth at ten AM due to extenuating circumstances. And so that is my basic report. Other than that, uh, in your packet, both printed and I believe at your places, uh, is a hard copy of the, uh, Granicus, uh, wireframe for the website. You will see that we are making prog- progress on that. Um, have a meeting scheduled with, uh, Keon Miller, who is the, uh, project coordinator. We are meeting now weekly, and then, uh, we also will, um, uh, disseminate that information to members of the committee. We are moving into content migration process, and that is going to take some time as we prepare to bring some pages over that we can. Uh, we're working through that at this point. Uh, and so with that, uh, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Uh, that is my report this morning.
Any questions for, um, marketing, social media marketing manager? Senator, thank you, Mrs. Smart.
Thank you.
Ms. David, UCNT?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Um, you've got your report, and I didn't get the gallons of water for the month of April figured out yet, but it usually runs fifty to sixty million, it doesn't vary very much. But you'll see the wastewater treated was a hundred and sixty-two million, which comes out to be an average of five point four million a day. That's over permit. But we're, well, I give you some good news, we're down to three million gallons a day now. So my guys got a lot of maintenance done in the last week, things that when you don't have a tank out of service, you can't work on them. And they pulled one telescopic valve out of a secondary clarifier, and it's stainless steel, it's about that big around. And it's, you know, yay long. It looked to me like lightning struck it. It'd be stainless steel and there's this jagged thing, and that's what was causing it to leak, and it was just a mess. I just, it, it wasn't lightning, I can't say what it was. I just, it was strange. But also completed the, uh, water quality report, we're getting it on the website for anybody to download, for any company, you know, that needs to have it for their audit. And you can look it up on the website, and we do have paper copies if somebody can't do it. And best of all, we won the gold award for the water system. We had no violations. We met or exceeded all regulations and rules from EPD. So water's great, wastewater's tough, um, and life goes on. So if y'all have any questions, we're just struggling at the treatment plant right now, but, and we're still shorthanded.
Any questions for UCNT?
Thank y'all.
All right, at this time, we're getting ready to transition into our agenda items. Okay, we have, uh, a good number of, um, proclamations that we're about to get into. So for the people here for proclamations, uh, it's, it's coming up now. So we are approving all in a lump sum, I guess. Um, all right, agenda item number one, do we have a motion to approve these proclamations?
So do.
It's been properly moved. And second, that we, uh, approve these proclamations, all in favor, let me know about once we're all aye.
Aye.
Aye, proclamations approved. Uh, first one is International Firefighters Day, May fourth, twenty twenty-four, between our residential readers. Y'all left my right, I dare figure out who's gonna read them, as they read, you all can come up and accept them.
Proclamation, National International Firefighters Day, May fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas International Firefighters Day is observed each year on May fourth to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, to express gratitude to those that have served in this line of work, and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve. And whereas regardless of the language a firefighter speaks or the country in which he or she works and resides, all firefighters fight against the same enemy, fire. And whereas firefighters follow a long line of tradition and honor it, and honor that inspires them to help colleagues, neighbors and strangers alike. And whereas at a moment's notice, firefighters are quick to respond to uncertain situations to mitigate danger and combat the threat of destructive fire in order to protect individuals, families and the economic being of our community. And whereas the demands of firefighting are accomplished by both personal and physical tools that our firefighters knowingly accept while risking their lives to protect the lives of others. Now, therefore, the City of Cordeals supports and appreciates City of Cordeale firefighters who protect our lives and property so diligently throughout the year and remembering past firefighters who dedicated their lives to preserve our safety the seventh day of May, two thousand twenty-four. City Commission of Cordeale, Joshua Darisso, Chairman, Royce Effery Senior, Vice Chair, Ward Two, Vestaville Shepherd, Commissioner, Ward One, Jay Wesley Rainey, Ward Four, Isaac Owens, Ward Three. Congratulations.
Thank you all. All right, next is the fifty-fifth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May fifth through eleventh. Commissioner Shepherd will be doing the honors of reading this.
Proclamation, Fifty-Fifth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May fifth through eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public service. And whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizen and the local governing bodies and agencies of government and other level, levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality in rendering equal service to all. And whereas, excuse me, professional municipal clerks strive to improve the administration of their affairs with the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through our participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops and annual meetings in their state prominent county and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the company of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk Week. Now, therefore, the City of Cordeale Commission would like to extend our appreciation to all professional municipal clerks. Genevieve Janice Moncrief, Alicia Williams, to all professional municipal clerk the vital service they perform and the exemplary dedication to the commi- to the community that they serve and represent. The seventh day of May, twenty twenty-four, the City of Cordeale Commission, Joshua Darisso, Chairman, Royce Effery Senior, Vice Chairman, Ward Two, Isaac Owens, Commissioner, Ward Three, Jay Wesley Rainey, Ward Four, and yours truly, Vestaville Shepherd, Ward One. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Drinking Water Week, May fifth through the eleventh, twenty twenty-four. My favorite water.
Well, all of my belt guys were busy.
Proclamation, Drinking Water Week, May fifth through eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource. And whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving as an essential purpose to health, hydration and hygiene needs for the quality of life of our citizens enjoy. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operating, ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps. And whereas the coronavirus pandemic has shown a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration and hygiene needs. And whereas we are all stewards of a water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend upon. And whereas the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation and get involved in with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now, therefore, be it resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in the City of Cordeale Commission do hereby proclaim, May fifth through eleven, two thousand twenty-four, as Drinking Water Week, the seventh day of May, two thousand twenty-four. Joshua Darisso, Chairman, Royce Effery Senior, Vice Chair, Vestaville Shepherd, Commissioner, Ward One, Jay Wesley Rainey, Commissioner, Ward Four, and Isaac Owens, Commissioner, Ward Three. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next is National Hospital Week, May twelfth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, it is indeed an honor that I do this one. Proclamation, National Hospital Week. Whereas National Hospital Week initially began as a date. Created in nineteen twenty-one, this day was used as a way to promote confidence and education in hospitals following the Spanish Flu of nineteen eighteen. It was led into a week in nineteen thirty-three to align for additional public education. And whereas the initial hospital day was chosen in honor of the birthday of Florence Nightingale, May twelfth. Florence was a pioneer of nursing profession and created with institution early sanitation practices. It only makes sense that National Hospital Week and National Nurses Week overlap. And whereas National Hospital Week recognized over six thousand hospitals, healthcare systems and outstanding staff members that contribute to the team work required to provide quality health care. All hospitals are included in this recognition, from acute care hospital to veteran administration hospital to children psychiatric hospitals, clinical staff, maintenance workers, supply chain workers, medical records, billing department and so many more other vital maintainers, the seamless flow of hospitals. And whereas National Hospital Week is sponsored by the American Hospital Association, their theme for twenty twenty-four is healthy hospitals, health of community. National Hospital Week gives an opportunity to highlight your hospital, your health system and health system care provider. The AH, the AHA, the National Hospital and Healthcare Workers should participate in National Hospital Week by sharing their stories and experiences and working with the frontline through the pandemic. And whereas National Hospital Week and the National Nurses Week overlap because joining the profession plays a critical role in hospitals. The depth and breadth of nursing profession meet the different and emerging healthcare needs of American population in a wide range of settings. Now, therefore, the City of Cordeale Commission recognizes and celebrates National Hospital Week, May twelfth through eighteenth, and National Nurses Week, May sixth through twelfth, for their diligent work in providing healthcare services to those persons in need and also their accomplishment and effort made to improve our healthcare system throughout the year. Signed, the seventh day of May, twenty twenty-four. City of Cordeale Commission, Josh Darisso, Chairman, Royce, Royce Effery Senior, Vice Chairman, Ward Two. Isaac Owens, Commissioner Ward Three, Jay Wesley Rainey Ward Four, and yours truly, Vesterbea Shepherd, Ward Number One, and the hospital is in Ward One.
Congratulations. All right, next is National Police Week, May twelve through eighteen, twenty twenty- uh, four. All right, I think we have some representatives from the police department.
Proclamation, National Police Week, May twelfth through eighteen, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Cordeal Police Department. And whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-four thousand sixty-seven law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including three members of the Cordeal Police Department. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas two hundred eighty-two name- new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including one hundred eighteen officers killed in two thousand twenty-three and one hundred sixty-four officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's thirty-six candlelight vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May twelfth through eighteen. And whereas May fifteenth is designated as Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the United States flag show should be flown at half staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Cordeal Commission will observe May twelfth through eighteen, two thousand twenty-four as National Police Week in Cordeal, Chris County, Georgia, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. The seventh day of May, two thousand twenty-four, the City of Cordeal Commission, Joshua Darisso Chairman, Royce F. Reeves Senior, Vice Chairman Ward Two, Vesterveal Shepherd, Commissioner Ward One, Jay Wesley Rainey, Commissioner Ward Four, Isaac Owens, Commissioner Ward Three. Congratulations.
Thank you for your services. All right, next is National Mental Health Month. I believe Commissioner Shepherd will read that.
Is there anyone here for mental health? Yeah, I guess I stand to represent. Proclamation, Mental Health Month, twenty twenty-four. Where to start? Mental health in a challenging world. Whereas the areas someone lives in plays a significant role in the overall health of well-being. And whereas surrounding can affect how and when a person needs a medic, which in turn affects the mental health. And whereas having a safe, stable, and healthy home condition sets the foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health. And whereas with early and effective interventions, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and be full productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizens share the burden of mental health problems and are responsible measures to report to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, the City of Cordeal Commission do hereby proclaim May, twenty twenty-four, as Mental Health Month in Cordeal, Georgia. The City of Cordeal Commission also called upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, schools, to recommend to the community increased awareness and understanding of mental health. The stepped-out citizens can take to promote their mental health and the needs of a properly accessible service for all people of mental health condition. Signed, the seventh day of May, twenty twenty-four. Joshua Darisso Chairman, City of Cordeal Commission, Royce F. Reeves Senior, Vice Chair Ward Two, Isaac H. Owens, Commissioner Ward Three, Jay Wesley Rainey, Commissioner Ward Four, and Mental Health Check, Vesterbea Shepherd, Ward One.
Well, we only have that one during the city manager's report. All right, um, all right, do we have a motion? Um, so agenda item number two, consider and approve event permit, family event food truck Friday, May tenth, Community Clubhouse. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
It's been properly moved in the second that we approve, um, the food truck Fridays. Any discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Agenda approved. All right, uh, agenda item number three, consider and approve event permit, family event, celebration of June tenth, Community Clubhouse, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, organizing as Cordeal N C double A branch, um, President Isaac Owens. All right, do we have a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved, second.
It's been properly moved in the second that we approve this permit for June sixteenth. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens? You're sustaining?
Yes.
Our commissioner, uh-
I'm sustaining.
He's sustaining, so make sure in the minutes he's sustaining, sorry, should've known. Uh, Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
All right, three votes passed, uh, approved, motion carries. All right, agenda item number four, consider and approve a vote delegating the flag bearer for the Georgia Municipal Association Annual-
Convenient.
Uh, do we have a motion for number four?
Second.
It's been properly moved in the second that we consider and approve this. All right, discussion?
I carry the last show.
Involved ears?
And I don't mind carrying this show.
I carry this.
My motion is for Commissioner Owens, Ward Three, to-
You want to vote both?
I'll do both.
Thank you.
To do both.
All right, so, uh, the motion right now, do we have a, is for Commissioner Owens to also be the voting delegate in the flag bearer, uh, to the, um, annual conference this year in Savannah? Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Has been properly moved in the second that Commissioner Isaac Owens will be the voting de- voting delegate and fa- flag bearer at annual conference this year. All right, Commissioner, uh, Shepherd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right. Uh, agenda item number five, um, considering and approve the request for items listed for two twelve North Second Street, Boys and Girls Club, be de- declare surplus and dispose of surplus items via the, uh, gov dot, uh, govdeals dot com.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second for this item. Uh, all right, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Uh, I, so, um, I do have a question. So even the pool table with all that stuff is going to be declared, and that's inside?
Yes.
The actual other building. I guess considered the whole thing, the old Boys and Girls Club. Uh, just for specific reasons, uh, the rest of that is kind of like out in the area, grass area, right, the field?
Yes, the playground equipment is right next to the building, it's outside.
Right.
And so, uh, probably with that, um, just looking at the condition of it, more than likely if it can't sell on govdeals dot com, then we just take it across the scale. And see what funds we can get, uh, from that method as well, if it doesn't sell on govdeals dot com.
Okay, but then the only thing that's inside actually one of the buildings is the pool table.
Yes.
So that's the item that's actually inside that, that other building?
No, it's inside the two twelve building.
Oh, the, the one that's condemned?
No, it's inside the two twelve building where, um, where, uh, you think, well, most people call it the yes building, they-
Right, the yes center.
So it is inside that building.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, any further discussion on that? All right, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
All right, motion carry, uh, items is declared surplus. All right. Consider and approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Classic Main Street M O U. Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
It's been properly moved in the second that we consider and approve the M O U for the Classic Main Street. All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All right, Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
All right, M O U is approved, motion carries. All right, consider and approve the fireworks tax grant and the required ten percent match. Um, I think the chief shared background information, it'd be a twenty-five hundred dollar match from us. Um, um, I believe, uh, is that correct? Okay, ten percent, all right. Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
It's been properly moved in the second that we consider and approve, uh, the fireworks tax grant and the required ten percent match. All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All right, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, uh, fire tax grant with the ten percent match is, uh, approved. Thank you. All right, considering and approve the officer training reimbursement agreement for the police department?
So moved, second.
It's been properly moved in the second that we consider and approve the officer training reimbursement agreement for the department. Okay, any discussion? All right, could you, um, I'm sorry. Could you, uh, so, could you explain the agreement?
Yes, so the officer training reimbursement agreement is for, um, officers coming on board who, uh, we pay for their training if they're cadet going through, um, mandate school, we're paying for training. So we, there's another agreement, uh, OCGA, and I don't remember the number. But if an officer leaves, if we pay for them to go through training and they leave and go to another agency, then that agency within a certain amount of time, um, they will refund the city for the training expense. However, we have had, I, I know at least one, maybe two, but I, I know for certain one officer who we paid for him to go through training, mandate training, and then when he completed the training and, and stayed for the city just a short amount of time, he decided that law enforcement career was not for him. And so in those situations like that, then we're losing money because we're not, he did not go to another agency, so we're not being reimbursed for that training. With this particular agreement, we will be able to recruit the cause for individuals that go through training and decide it's not for them, and we have invested a lot into their training.
How we recruit the cause?
Uh, in the agreement, uh, we give them a certain amount of time to pay, um, we give them, well, thirty calendar days from that decision, but if they're, if they are unable to pay the full amount, then the agreement allows for, uh, payment arrangement and the minimum, uh, amount is one hundred dollars a month. And normally, chief, how much do we normally spend for training?
Uh, it's anywhere between six thousand on the low end and about ten or more.
Yeah, I've, I've signed some of those things before, so seeing, um. And we expect the person to pay it back?
Yes, yes. If it's one of the instances like where they're not going to another agency or just getting, completely getting out of law enforcement, then this agreement would cover the city in terms of reimbursement for that cause.
And what means we would have to make them pay us back? Do we hit the credits and them? Or like, is it enforceable? That's my question because, and then, uh, that costs, you know, one, one reason IRS doesn't go out there everybody is because how much it costs to go out there everybody, it sees what you'll get back. So my thing, is it even feasible to kind of? You know, I, I know we're losing money, uh, uh, and that's part of the thing, but sometimes the, you know, trying to get people to comply actually costs money and things like that, so I'm trying to figure out, you know. I- is it realistic, or do we cut all losses?
Well, I will say, most agencies do have in place a two-year commitment. And, um, I have seen where in some instances other agencies will pay, and then in some instances the employee will pay. Now, I guess it's, I, just by, I would say luck or whatever, they know they signed this agreement and so they did go, you know, make the payment. But it just depends. I never had one that did not, but you, I mean, there's always a first time.
Okay, all right. Well, you all heard, uh, now we shall proceed to vote. All right, Commissioner Rainey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
All right, uh, it, the agreement is approved. All right, knowing that was gonna happen, I do have a quick question. Would this act in any way do you think is a deterrent for attracting officers?
I don't think so because most agency has a standard two-year commitment.
But do they have this particular documentation in place?
Well, it's something similar to this, yes, the two-year requirement agreement. And I can get those for you all if, uh, you know, there's concerns, I can get those agreements for you as a matter of fact. Of course, as you know, you don't reinvent the wheel, you take what you have and cater it for your organization, but I can get copies of those for you all.
The vote has been passed, it's just my concern that I, 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 yeah, that, yeah.
What, what you're, what you're, what you're concerned, I mean, saying, listening. I'm thinking that this may be something that we should take to the next meeting till we can see what the city manager gives.
You already voted for it, so it's already passed.
It's, it's, it's nothing to rescind the motion.
Okay.
I want, I would like to make a motion to rescind the motion until we can get further information.
Okay, all right. It's a motion to rescind the motion to approve, um, the officer training reimbursement agreement for the police department. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been seconded, all right. Any discussion on the rescinding of the motion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rainey, how do you vote?
Nine.
Commissioner Reeves, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote?
No.
All right, I vote yay, so we were saying that motion, uh, until the next meeting. Uh, hopefully it'll be on to look at and review, all right? Thank you. All right, agenda item number nine, rescinding alcohol license approval for Club Zodiac. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, it's been properly moved in the second that we were saying alcohol license approval for Club Zodiac. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I, I believe that the Club Zodiac is within, um, less than a distance from a church. There's a church in that block across the street. And the reason that we reconsider it is that because of the church and, and, and the religious belief.
And do you know that for sure? How did you come across that information is my question?
I have, the church is around behind where I used to live. I have, the church is right behind where I used to live, I lived at five oh two nineteenth Avenue West. There's a church directly between eighteenth and nineteenth, and the church is a a small hole in this church. I don't know what, suddenly they have leaded, there's a sign in front of that church saying Church Services Star. And the minister there is, um, Minister Dean, Diane Dean is the minister at that church. But I haven't talked to her, said if it's still for operational, but there is a church there.
She sent a letter stating that it, they are operational.
It is operational, okay.
Alright, any further discussion?
Yes, chairman, my issue with this is, um. In a couple meetings before, I've all, I I've asked who does the measuring on these and, uh. Make sure everything complies with local and state laws before it comes before us. And. My, my issue is us having something that is presented to, uh, saying that it meets all local and state guidelines. And then us having to rescind something that comes about later. There's been, uh, clubs at this location before, there's been alcohol licenses at this location before. I, uh, I know the state law, but this is very embarrassing. On this whole commission because all of us approved, it was, we all approved this alcohol license. And it was supposed to meet local and state guidelines before it came to us, so. I'm, I'm hesitant on, on this because this is, uh. It just all should have met, that's a, it's a fault somewhere in our governmental process.
Chairman.
Uh, I, give me one more, are you done Commissioner Rainey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think Commissioner Reeves had his hand up as well, slightly, but.
I'm pretty much in it, I'm pretty much in the grants with Commissioner Rainey here. It, uh, it came before this board for approval and, and and we approved it. Uh, my my concern is the, uh, the finances, that the money that. The business owners spent on that building, um, you know. The money that they spent to go in that building, and I'm pretty sure that when they got the permit to do the work, that it was known. By the city of Cordill that, that, uh, their intention was to sell that, um. Because like Commissioner Shepherd said, it has always been a club, that it's it's always been there, so. My my, I understand the law, I understand that somebody dropped the ball, I I understand that, I I I get it. But it's. What do we, what do we do about the finances of the person who was, you know, it's. It it's like a cat playing with a mouse for us to tell somebody that they got a license to serve alcohol, and they get prepared to go and sell alcohol. And two weeks later, three weeks later, we right back in here telling them that they can't do it, I got an issue with that, that's, that that's my issue. Because if, like I said, when I voted, I voted because it had, everything had been approved.
You done Commissioner, uh, uh, Reeves, Commissioner Shepherd?
We voted because on the, on the application, it said the church is on nineteenth Avenue and twelfth Street. That was the nearest church, and that was so many feet away, but I don't know which was there first, the church or the club, even though I live in that neighborhood. I don't know when this club was built or the church was built, I don't know if they had a license, property, the church being built there, or with the, you know, which was first. Because everybody else had license there, say, of you, so I don't know, I I mean, to be fair and honest, to both aid, the church and to, to the owners. I don't know which one was there first, if the club was there first and they had license all these years, you see what I'm saying? If the church be there afterwards, who do we honor?
I think that's a question for the city attorney.
Mr. Chairman, um, I would suspect I'll off the table this for another time. Uh, but there is some exposure if somebody spends money in reliance on, uh, on what the commission does. I don't know how much it was or whether it's useful or not, but, uh, uh. I I'd like to work with the city attorney, I think I can help solve this problem.
Any, any further comments?
I I do, uh, you know, this is analyzing what you said, Commissioner Shepherd, I believe. When that club, that building has been there for some time, that church has been there for some time, but I believe that when. When the people applied for the alcohol license in the past and received them, that that church was not being used.
Operation, okay.
And that's why they was able to get an alcohol license at that building because the church wasn't being used. And, uh, I I I think the church, I mean, the the club was there. The club was in operation before that church, you know, and somebody came open the church, but, well, we dropped, well, what happened was, the club closed. The club closed, the church opened, and the church was open there, I mean, I get it, the church was open and the club was closed. And so it started all over, had the owners, had the old owners kept their license up, we wouldn't be having this issue.
Okay.
We 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 wouldn't be having this issue, but again, my concern, it came to this board that it was approved. And everything had been done and it was a goal, we voted on it, and this man sitting here in the audience was happy to throw the death that he had a license. Get ready to open up his business and, and now we're here, we're witnessing this conversation, so. This is a costly, this is a costly.
I think it's about seventy seven point something feet from each other.
Actually, I honestly, if we're gonna rescind alcohol license. I think it should be more geared toward work session anyway. Uh, I just, because it's a lot, and if we have gotten it wrong. In a meeting where it's not supposed to really be open to the public for comments. Then I kinda feel like us going ahead without having their input, we got questions that we cannot answer up here. And to have them sitting out here in this meeting where technically they're not supposed to say something, we can allow. I just feel like that's not the best way we wanna handle this, if we're gonna take somebody's license. I think we should do it in a way, it doesn't have to be a long one, but at least get all the facts out on the table. And even feelings, if that may be the thing sometimes, because that's where it usually is. Uh, but it apparently sitting here and not even understanding or knowing. All the details that even at this juncture, uh, because it's a difference for me in in what I do. When someone say I think and I know for a fact, and we can think all day. But that's when we make errors and mistake, when we dealing with this type of stuff, we need to know for a fact, rent down, having in front of us. And have that actually known before we make decisions. Um, so I I do agree with the city attorney that, um, I I think we may wanna. Table it, um, city manager, you have something to say?
No, I was just go, I was making a note that we're going to table it and bring it back for the next agenda, is that correct?
Chairman, I make a motion.
Hold on, hold on, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm gonna hear people out, because I have a little bit to say, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to make sure because I know when you said rescind alcohol license, we had public hearings before. When we think about fast stop in American Legion, so I just wanna make sure for the next agenda, will it be? And I guess the city attorney, once we have our discussion, if we, if it would be placed, you know, for. The owner to make comments as well.
Right, I think that'll be best, Commissioner Owens, you have anything?
Uh, well, I I think that that's gonna be the best thing because see, the other side of that, um, well, with the business owner is here and he's given, you know, he has. His thoughts on it, and then we've only re, the only thing we received is a letter from the church. Saying that they still have a church, and we don't know what their position on it either, and we don't want to get here and then have them come back and. And then we being a violation or something with them as well, so I think we need to have it all on the table, um, you know. Then we, and that where everybody can voice and then we can rule from there.
And we will have that because she did send a letter stating that they're operational and they are against, you know, a club and selling the alcohol.
Alright, uh, Commissioner Owens, I mean Reeves.
I guess this question will be for the chief. Just say the club is up and running, there's nothing to say that the church can't come and open, right?
Well, you're looking at state laws for distances, things like that, and the way that the city.
The 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 church can, it it's okay if the church comes and the club is already open, right?
That's right.
Alright, and I wanna be clear why, um, I propose a work session. Because if I start to let people who wanna speak during this meeting, then it becomes a very slippery slope. And then we get into, you know, well, you let that person spoke, you know, while you didn't. So I try to hold very much that this meeting is not for anybody who wanna say something, be able to say something, that's what work sessions. However, we do have a policy in which if you get to the meeting early and it's agenda item on here. You can sign up and you can speak on that, um, on that agenda item. So you utilize that, we also have a policy in which you can, uh, file with the clerk to speak, um, in a public meeting. I think it's, uh, Wednesday now for the public before five, Wednesday before five before the meeting. So for instance, it would have been, this is Tuesday, it would have been last Wednesday, whatever that date was before five P M. So those are your two measures if you like to address the public or the commission or a specific agenda item. And you can call city hall, but I will say, uh, I agree much with what Commissioner Rainey said until he got to embarrassment. I don't feel embarrassed, and I won't feel embarrassed, and this is why, because time and time again, since I took this office. Uh, I don't like Ronald Reagan much, but he had a very powerful saying, trust but verify. And at the end of the day, uh, and and the chief know because we had some during his oath of office. If I don't feel right about something, I am gonna hold it up until I get some questions answered. And I understand we are as good as information a lot of the time, but I feel like because of relationships. And I I I'll be honest, I have this problem in jobs, that's why I work for myself, uh, I don't put no relationship before my job and what I need to do. I don't care if you're family, I don't care if you're a close friend, but I am gonna ask the critical questions before I make a decision. And I believe what is going on and has been going on is that we take people word for a lot of things. When the whole bedrock of democracy is about deliberation, about critical thinking. And I encourage this commission to stop taking things so personally. If people have questions of a department head, of a city manager, of a clerk, or one another. Because you c- you can't be critical up here, you can't ask questions, you can't hold anything up if your mind is not made up. The way even in, I I I quarrel with the G M A sometimes because even they train, you just pass along, you vote, and you don't have deliberation, don't ask questions. And you just pass it along, well, that's how this happens. We just don't think, we don't deliberate, we won't, a hour meeting and getting out of here. I think this commissioner has done better than the last, but there's room to improve. Um, so that's my piece on that, and I apologize, I will apologize on behalf of the city as the chairman. For having that mix up because the buck do stop here with these five people. So I will apologize to you all for that, uh, mix up, we're gonna make mistakes, but. We should forever be trying to limit the mistakes we're making, and I don't think we've been affected with that. I think our city managers cleaned up a lot of loopholes and processes, uh, you know, I do see that. And, you know, it's gonna take some time, but I do wish we get better, and my piece is. Let's take things in good-hearted deliberation and critical thinking and not take it personal when people ask questions. Even if we don't like the questions. Alright, any further thing on, um, agenda, uh, number nine? Uh, I think we make a motion to table, okay, do we have a second to table?
Second.
Alright, it's been properly moved in second that we table agenda, uh, not, uh, number nine. Uh, we shall proceed to vote Commissioner Rainey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Alright, agenda number nine has been tabled, alright. Alright, agenda nine, number ten, do we have a motion to discuss?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that we discuss, uh, agenda item number ten, alright. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Okay, uh, the city manager called me about this, I was out of town all this, we heard. Really, this is not decriminalization, we just, uh, council has the right. In municipal court to establish a penalty, and what we're doing here is saying it's not incarceration, it's a fine. Um, it is a little more complicated than that, uh, because. Possession of list and ounce of marijuana is one of the things that cities have concurrent, concurrent jurisdiction with state. Right, so we can't repeal the state law, so all we can do is what the city can do. So if you pass this, what would happen when a person comes to municipal court? Instead of, uh, having a potentially incarceration, you would be fined a hundred. Now, if the sheriff arrests somebody or the state control. They could, they could, they probably go to the state court system somewhere and potentially they would be incarcerated. We don't have the authority to deal with that, uh, but we do have the authority to set that penalty, uh, with a fine. And not incarcerate, what I've got in here, this is what Savannah used, uh, everybody, there was one city. I looked at had five hundred dollars, but, uh, Mr. Reeves was suggested a hundred dollars and he he brought it up. So that's what I put in there, and then if a person can afford that, uh, the judge can assign them to some sort of community service. And, uh, uh, and that, that does, would be it, still, it's still against the law to possess less than ounce of marijuana. And I did, I had, wanted to talk to Judge Wright, so I did, uh, he's been in the hospital and he had a operation. I finally got him home, he was laying on his back and he, he, he hadn't, he said, I can't remember where we put anybody in jail for. So we hadn't had a lot of people in city courts, or any go to jail for it, uh, but, uh, this would. Just establish a hundred dollar penalty, God, you could be just.
Are there any other cities that we know of that has implemented this?
Yeah, uh, there're, you know, Athens, Savannah, some cities around Atlanta, East Point, uh, uh, Tobey Island. Uh, there're, uh, we have five hundred and some odd fifty cities, it's a, it's a minority of those. But there are some, some cities, yes, ma'am, I have a list, I don't know that I brought, if I read you what I had, you know.
I was in New York a couple of weeks ago and they were smoking all in the streets, legal there, so, you know, I'm just wondering, you know. And they just like to smoke a cigarette down there, so, and they don't give, you know, any five anything, I'm just wondering, you know. And some of us did the same thing back in old days now, you know.
I just, here we are, huh? I I sat back and I watched people go back to, sat back and watched people go back to prison. For a simple possession of marijuana, uh, watch these, watch these charges destroy, destroy the youth, younger people lives. Uh, so it's, it's just, it's, I I think it's a bit much. You know, they have somebody incarcerated for something, other states have legalized, another city has pretty much what I call deprimed law, so that's my prediction.
Like, that's the term that everybody uses. Now, if somebody, let's say they get fined a hundred bucks, they don't pay. Uh, they're gonna sign to community service, they don't pay, they don't do anything, he still could issue a visual. They could go to jail for not doing what they're supposed to do, but it wouldn't be the charge of marijuana. I don't know, he said he had community service, he assigned people to community service, I asked him that, uh, if we had. I don't know what they do, but he said he did that, he assigned people to community service. Which is so fine, there's a lot of poor people can't pay anything, you know, so they do community service in, uh, in lieu of the. In this case, a hundred dollar fine or anything like that.
And hypothetically, if it's a probation violation. And hypothetically, if it's a probation violation, they also could get locked back up as well. So if they can do it and that's a probation violation, which is usually the biggest reason people get locked back up. So, but I, I do like it because it is doing worse in the capacity of the city, uh, legally. Uh, so I do like it, but just for the public to understand, there's still ways, if you get this fine, you still can get locked back up. It ain't, I can smoke it in the streets, I can have as much as I want. Uh, it's very specific and, and things, so that needs to be known as well. Uh.
Commissioner, Commissioner Owens had a question to me and I would like to address the question. He said, what happened to, how did they get it? I told him everybody got a supply, not the supplier get caught, he caught the face of time. Am I right?
Well, I, I asked the question largely because we saying that if a poor, if a poor person can't afford to pay the fine, but they can afford to buy it.
Okay.
That was, that was why I asked the question.
We don't have any, any authority over distribution and shit. That's something that goes to state court. We just have possession of less than an ounce.
Possession of less than an ounce?
Less than an ounce.
I, I, I never smoked because it make my head hurt, just putting that back.
Try it.
I grew up in the projects. I, I, of course, I, it's all around. I grew up in the pro- I will say this though. I don't think it costs a hundred dollars. So, uh, let's not forget that, you know, we can't have that mindset because we may be in a better position that if a person have it to buy it and some people medicate off of it. And the work I do, eh, I mean, with the young people I work with in the court system is their go-to when they're stressed, I think it's culturally too. Uh, I just think it's everywhere around them. But also, uh, what we've seen from the mental health side is when a youth is going through some stuff, then they actually, their use of it increases because it's a cheaper medication. Uh, and we try to provide therapy, but there's some taboo-ness around therapy in certain communities. So, uh, you can't equate a fine to if they got enough to buy it, they got enough to pay the fine. It ain't, it don't work like that. Yeah, uh, our clerk in a sense of that.
On behalf of the court, um, when it comes to marijuana, come to the municipal, this municipal court, um, ninety-nine percent of the people that are charged with possession of marijuana, Judge Wright will give them, um, conditional discharge where it's going to affect more than just, I got caught with marijuana, I'm going to have to pay a thousand dollar fine. If you get a conditional discharge, you twelve months probation, it is not on your record, so it won't affect you in the long, in, you know, in the long run. So it's not, it's a thousand dollar fine because it's illegal. Um, but if you do those twelve months probation and you doing successful, it is no longer on your record. So he is not, since he's been, I've been here longer than him and since he's been here, he's not sent anybody to jail for marijuana.
So then he has you, so they have to pay a thousand dollar fine?
Uh huh.
In twelve months?
Yes.
Probation.
Yes.
See, from the side I work on, I think that is the problem. Because you're talking about a thousand dollars and I'm going to be honest with you. Uh, a lot of people do it who wear suits and ties and have desk jobs, but because they're not caught.
Why?
Certain people are caught because the other crime that goes around them and some people are not. So it becomes very racially and geographically driven. And then that thousand dollars plus twelve months. And also, the thing about it again, if something else happened, they get a violation of that probation, then they can go to jail. So while that may seem innocent on its face, uh, from the surface, when you get down to it, it can be a pathway to jail. Even though they're not going to jail with the thousand dollars and the twelve month probation, it still can lead to jail based on because if they don't pay that money, then what happened?
If they don't, if the, um, well, no, they're not going to jail. It, it'll be on probation, they have a probation violation, but, um.
Which can send them to jail.
Well, yeah.
I've been doing this for twelve years.
I just started talking, I'm like, oh yeah, this is still the years they will go to jail.
Yes, sir.
I want to say probably a week or two ago, the Fed declared a schedule three drug. Uh, so with, with that being said, and I don't just know, but I asked questions around the community when this came up. Uh, ounce of marijuana, you get an ounce of marijuana for eighty bucks. So to have something for eighty bucks, spend a thousand dollar fine, I think ridiculous. So, a- again, I think, I think this is something that we, that we need to do. She in the city of Columbia.
The chief, wait.
From the law enforcement, you're talking about less than an ounce of marijuana, that's a misdemeanor. So people aren't going to prison for that. More than an ounce, you're talking about distribution and things like that, they are going to prison for that. So what's on the table is less than an ounce. Now, what our officers have been doing is writing a citation, we haven't been bringing people to jail for that. Um, so, you know, the, the fact that people are going, the comment is made that people are going to prison for less than an ounce, that, that's not true. Uh, they're receiving citations for that and we are releasing on that.
Chief, if someone is on probation.
We don't deal with probation.
Uh, what I'm saying, if someone's on probation, if you charged them with possession of marijuana, they can go back to prison for just having a run-in with the law.
They don't, they're fined, they don't, they don't have to worry about going back to prison.
You said nobody's going back to prison for it, just.
No, they're not going back to prison for just the simple possession of it. They are already on probation for another charge that they have previously have committed. So they're not going to prison for possession less than an ounce. They're going to prison for the previous charge as well as the new charge, then they're going to prison.
But with the new charge of the simple possession of marijuana, it could land you back in prison, am I right?
It can because of the previous charge. So that's, in other words, two crimes.
Right, so what?
So they are basically at that point of the visual violator, they're committing two crimes. So yes, they can bring them, but does the simple possession? No, they're not going to prison.
But, but a citation for somebody who's on probation wouldn't land you back in prison.
Potentially, if they would stop, first you know all of them.
We have very limited authority in the city.
Right.
Just less than an ounce of marijuana.
Right.
Nothing else, so.
I, I think we're, we're trying to figure out, and I agree with Commissioner Reeves on their standpoint, law enforcement, I think on our side are doing what they're doing, like I said, citation. But I think our thing is what we have jurisdiction over is when they actually come to court.
Yes, sir.
And then what we do with them then. Cause I don't think we have a problem, because our law enforcement is appropriately doing what we're asking on that end. But when they come to court right now is what we have jurisdiction over with the limits of the state law. Uh, and I think, um, uh, you know, I think this is a good thing because it's not perfect. So I'm not making that thing, but it's a good thing because where I believe it will allow us to do is reduce the amount they have to pay. Okay, which make it more feasible for them to pay. And then I think when we take away some of that thing, it lessens the people push to jail from the city standpoint. You can't worry about the county or the state, but from the city standpoint, it has potential. And that's just what we have to work with, the potential and that, that may be two out of ten. But two out of ten is still, we get number versus ten out of ten, um, going. So I think that's what we're trying to aim at, you're, you're limited. So I, I, I do agree with it for that reason, because I, I've just done it too long to know where it can manifest if we just lift it as it is. Um, any other comments, questions?
Can I get a question?
I, I.
I know it, I know it.
No, ma'am.
I'm going to be, y'all missed me.
We, we, we probably, um, I'm, no, ma'am, I gotta keep it tight.
Well, okay, I'm in here, this is, this is mental health week, right?
Yeah, but we talking about marijuana. You're right, you're right. And, and hold on, hold on, let me say this. Let me say this, I do think. I do think, um, like I was saying, I think I spoke to the point you're getting to and I, you know, we talked long and forever, uh, some days. But I do, like I said, in my capacity, what I do. I've seen for myself, not reading the books, that the more people stressing, the more they're in poverty, the usage go up. And, you know, we can argue with that and everything, it's not the best thing to do. Uh, I'm on the front lines of this stuff every day, uh, in, in my capacity. So I get it. Uh, I even tell our judge that judge, that you can't put everybody out of the program who going to test positive because then we gonna have no kids in the program, it's just cultural. We may have, out of the cohorts we run, so I get it. Uh, and then there's households that uses it. And so it, it's a issue, but I think what Commissioner Reeves have done was do what the city can do on their all part. And that's the best we can give them, and that's the best we can do. Um, you know, you can petition to the state legislators and all that, if, if more want to be done, but that's what we can do. Any further questions come in on the gentleman, out of number ten?
I think next to turn to one question for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Is Georgia state approved for, for use of marijuana for pain management?
Yes, ma'am, they have a program, I think it's a very limited program. I'm not familiar with all the ins and outs, but yes, ma'am.
The camp passed, I think a few years ago, the camp.
You could get a license to grow it in some instances.
No further, um, discussion. How do you all want to proceed?
I'm making a motion that this is our first reading.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved in second that this is, this ordinance is the first reading of the decriminalization of marijuana. All right, we have lengthy discussion. All right, so we proceed to vote. Commissioner Reeves, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, and I vote yes. All right, opponent. All right, and so motion carries. All right, for the first reading. All right. So, she'll proceed. All right, now we'll move into our city manager's report. And then we're going to do our proclamation with tourism.
Morning. Um, before I go into my report, we do have another proclamation, tourism proclamation. And we have Ms. Marlene Kimball here with us today, uh, to accept the proclamation. And I'm a step aside.
Proclamation, National Tourism Week, May fifth, eleven, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas the travel industry is essential to the success of every industry and will continue to be a critical part of Cordial's economy, development and workforce. And whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country with economic output of two point eight trillion dollars supporting fifteen million American jobs. And whereas travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities in Cordial, Georgia and across the United States by generating eighty-nine billion dollars in state and local tax revenue in two thousand twenty-three to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety and more. And whereas travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare and more by driving sales growth, innovation, education and operations that power our economy, our nation and Cordial, Georgia. And whereas America's travel industry cannot be globally competitive without maximizing growth in leisure, business and international inbound travelers, increasing travel too and within the United States drives our economy to a more prosperous future and connects America. And whereas small businesses account for more than sixty percent of leisure and hospitality employment. And whereas travel is an essential industry and we must continue to communicate that growing travel leads to economic growth, benefits businesses, fosters mutual understanding and connects the nation. Therefore, the City of Cordial Commission do hereby proclaim May fifth, three eleven, two thousand twenty-four as National Tourism Week in Cordial, Georgia, and urge the citizens of Cordial to join us in recognizing the essential role this industry plays in Cordial the seventh day of May, two thousand twenty-four. Joshua Deroso, City Commission Chairman, Royce F. Reeves, Vice Chairman Ward Two, Vester Leo Shepherd, Commissioner Ward One, Jay Wesley Rainey, Commissioner Ward Four, Isaac Owens, Commissioner Ward Three.
Thank you, we appreciate this. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism Committee, we are so pleased with the city's proclamation and we're so pleased that the city has so many places for people to come visit and generate income with the city.
Thank you, thanks for your job.
City manager's report, May seventh, uh, twenty twenty-four. And I'll slide, thank you, so I think it's. Okay, April twenty-first to twenty-seventh was Georgia Cities Week. And so I am just going to highlight quickly some of the activities, uh, from Georgia Cities Week. First up, Maurice mentioned the housing summit on April twentieth. Uh, it was a great event. We had several speakers to, uh, present information to the group, as you can see. Uh, from the third photo, there were definitely a lot of people in attendance on that day. And it was, uh, again, a very good housing summit. And so we thank Maurice and Charlotte for all of their hard work and putting it together. Thank you. Okay, on Monday, April twenty-second, we held our annual employee service awards luncheon to recognize, uh, employees who achieved milestone anniversaries last year. And you should have a, a program at your seat with all of the names of the employees we've recognized. And we thank, uh, Commissioner Owens and Commissioner Rainey for, uh, presenting the proclamation to the employees and the awards. Next up, on Friday, April twenty-sixth, we had employee appreciation luncheon. And basically it was just to show appreciation to all employees. And as you can see, Addie's Food Truck provided a great meal that was enjoyed by all. Is that correct? So, uh, thanks to Addie's and again, thank you to all of the employees, we appreciate you. Next up, we had the coloring contest. And so all of the entries were from Christopher Academy. And so we had, um, originally announced a first and second, uh, place prize for, uh, the three categories, only the first and second grade and third and fourth grade participated in the coloring contest. We had four judges from, uh, finance, human resources, police, and there was one other. That's right, court, okay. We had four judges and they were soft-hearted. So in the first and second grade category, we ended up with more than three prizes instead of two. And, and the winners are here. Uh, Jones Wright, first place, Olivia Gray, second place, and Grady Watson, third place in the first and second grade category. In the third and fourth grade category, uh, William Bridges won first place and Kears Lavender, second place. She, um, had left school early, uh, so we did not have the opportunity to take a picture with her. But, uh, the picture will be coming soon for Kears. So again, uh, thanks to all who participated in, uh, the coloring contest. And we took a group photo and they were very happy, uh, with their awards. The first and second place winners received a gift card to Chick-fil-A along with the coloring book and the certificate. And the second place winners were awarded a certificate along with a, a gift card from Dairy Queen. And then the third place winner, uh, he received five dollars cash, some crayons and a book, so. So they enjoyed it and, uh, again, thanks to all of those who participated. Next up, your voice matters, your vote matters. And, um, it's very important that, uh, we take advantage of, of voting. And so with that, because I could not find the information on the elections website, I, um, asked Becky if she could send the information to me. And so advanced in-person voting act, we began on April twenty-ninth and will continue through May seventeenth from eight A M. to six P M. and will continue through May seventeenth from eight AM to six PM at, uh, the voting location, uh, downtown. And then Saturday voting, uh, we already had one Saturday where citizens could vote, it was May fourth, and citizens can vote again May eleventh, uh, this coming Saturday from nine AM to five PM. And as of last Saturday, uh, only three hundred and fifty-one people had voted. So make sure you take advantage of advanced voting and Saturday voting. Uh, May tenth is the last day to submit an application for an absentee ballot, uh, by mail, but I tell you, we are truly dealing with snail mail, so I don't know how this is going to work. And then the election day is May twenty-first from seven AM to seven PM. And you, uh, at that time, you will vote in your assigned precinct. And should you have any questions, uh, please contact Becky at, uh, two-two-nine-two-seven-six-twenty-six-eleven. Okay, additional updates and announcements. Um, at the last meeting I mentioned, um, Sam Shortline was awarded a one million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollar grant for construction of an auxiliary track and maintenance facility at Georgia Veterans State Park. Again, we wanna thank, uh, Catherine Williams, Second Congressional District Representative on the State Transportation Board. And then GDOT Commissioner Russell McMurray and Clement Solomon for their support of Sam Shortline. And you should have received the invitation to, um, an event, I think it's, uh, on May fourteenth from one to two PM at, um, the state park where, uh, they will come and present, uh, the check and make the grant announcement for, um, Sam Shortline. Just a reminder that River Valley Legislative Luncheon is May twenty-second, and you receive information regarding the luncheon. And then we received a thank you card from Chris County E-nine-one-one Communication System Center, I'm sorry. So you all should have received a copy of that as well, and, uh, we thank them for coming out to receive their proclamation. Um, as previously mentioned, since, uh, the phone system went out last year, we can only have twenty, uh, voicemail, uh, setups across the entire city, so that has been a challenge. Um, and we do have, uh, Victoria who answer every phone call that comes into the city. And so this week, on May ninth, uh, we will be reviewing the bids for the phone system, and hopefully we can have that for the next agenda, so we can, um, move forward with installing a new phone system. The current phone system, I think, has been in the building since the nineties, and it's time for an upgrade. Career, Career Awareness Day is May fourteenth at the middle school, and, um, several employees and Commissioner Shepherd, and I will be attending Career Awareness Day. Uh, if you would like to participate, just, uh, let us know, and I can reach out and, and hit you on the schedule. There are three time slots available for that. We had three employees to, uh, complete the first aid class that was offered by Chief Allard in the fire department. Uh, the employees were Louis New, Ricky Smart, and, and Antonio Hill, and so we do appreciate those employees completing the very first first aid training that was offered, uh, through the city. And so we look forward to more first aid training, and when those dates and times are set, I will make sure that we get that information to you. Uh, we have begun interviewing candidates for the open position of Finance Director, and hope to have someone selected soon. Uh, we had a retirement in the fire department, Mr. Frederick Paul, and so we will, um, we're waiting on some things to come in, and so, uh, we will, uh, plan an event for both Frederick and Beverly once those, uh, items are here. And so we hope he is enjoying his retirement. You should have in your packet, and I sent it out, um, last week, uh, guidelines for the City of Cordeal Safety and Accident Review Committee. Um, basically, uh, the mission of the committee will be to protect the safety of the general public, the safety of city employees, and to minimize loss to city property. The committee will review all incidents, accidents involving city personnel, vehicles, buildings, and equipment. And, um, you have the guidelines as well as the proposed committee members, which will consist of department heads, and then one elected official that will be appointed by the governing body. As far as the meetings, I have left that open until, um, a member of the governing body is selected to serve on the committee, and then we will work the time for the meeting and arrange the schedule of, uh, the elected officials, so we can make sure that they are available to, uh, participate. And then we will bring additional information, including the accident report that employees complete, as well as the supervisor, um, a form that the supervisor will complete. And basically, if an accident is deemed chargeable to the employee, it will remain in their file for thirty-six months. So for three years, uh, it will remain in their file. And, and the proposal is three or more chargeable accidents in three years would be grounds for termination for the employee. And in terms of chargeable accident, that's where the employee is responsible for the accident that occurred. And so, uh, I requested information, uh, from human resources as to, uh, cost incurred in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and then fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And so, uh, for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, um, the expenses paid out in terms of workers' comp was seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. And then for this fiscal year to date, it's a little over five thousand dollars. But again, we wanna make sure that, uh, we are protecting our resources, the employees, and the public. Any questions regarding the, um, Safety and Accident Review Committee?
Yes, um, have this committee came before the commission for approval?
No, this is presentation, that's why I said guidelines. And so any questions or corrections or recommendations, if that's why I'm presenting it today. Yes. And then, um, if, you know, during the next week or so, before the next meeting, if there's anything that you all would like to add up questions, uh, have questions about or remove, just let me know, and we'll place it on the next agenda. And then also, I will be sending out, um, our meeting calendar for budget workshops. I know the chairman mentioned a work session earlier, but we, we need, uh, to schedule our budget workshops as well. All right, and I had to put this slide in here just so Commissioner Owens, now that you have been selected as the flag barrier for the convention, as well as the voting delegate, uh, you're going to have to represent now. This is... This is the flag barrier from last year, so I wanted to put that in there, so, so you would know. And then also, uh, in your, um, packet, you have the meetings and events that I attended in April. And with that, uh, thank you, and see if you all have any questions.
Any questions for the city manager's report?
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need a motion to create the Safety and Accident Committee, and motion approved?
I think she says she wants us to take a look at it and get back.
Yes, you all can take a look at, I know it's sitting on, I think, Saturday, Sunday, but if, and then any questions or comments, we can hand it and bring it back for the next.
So, you know, this workshop we're gonna do by the exact all license, do that for, at our next meeting? Or we can do a call meeting?
So, you all, how would you all like?
The next meeting, whether I wanna do, uh, call meeting or next meeting?
Can I work on this a little bit?
Oh, he wanna work on it.
Okay.
He wanna give the city manager...
Okay, so come back here from Mr. Cohen, then we'll reach out, it's gonna be in a call meeting or the next meeting, which is on next twenty-fourth.
Okay. Okay, that's all, next meeting, okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney, you have anything?
No, sir, but I would respect for a request that, uh, y'all have an executive session on litigation, very short.
Okay, all right. There's been a motion for executive session, we need a second?
Second.
All right, so properly moved in second, that we're moving to executive session at eleven oh three. Uh, moving to executive session number three, all in favor, let it be known by...
Aye.
All right, we shall move to executive session.
The second.
Okay, man, properly moved in second, that we come out of executive session at eleven twelve or eleven thirteen. Uh, but, uh, so, all in favor, let it be known by votes for aye.
Aye.
All right, motion care, we're now airing it back into regular session, eleven thirteen, all right? Do we have a motion to hire a law firm, Lacy, Lindsay, and Lacy, PC?
So move.
All right.
Second.
It's been properly moved, moved in second, that we're hiring a law firm, Lacy, Lindsay, and Lindsay, PC. All in favor, let it be known by votes for aye.
Aye.
All right, motion care, we, we're airing it to the, uh, contract with that law firm, all right? If no other business is to be discussed, uh, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved, moved in second, that we adjourn this meeting at eleven thirteen AM on the seventh. All in favor, let it be known by votes for aye.
Aye.
Motion care means adjourn.